Good evening, everyone. It is certainly my pleasure to call the October 2nd, 2024 Hampton City School Board Meeting to Order. Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Alphonja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. At this time, I will turn over our meeting to our student rep to the board. Sophia?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia Harris. I'll be your school board representative for the evening. Tonight, we would like Willard Davenport to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and I understand you have something prepared for us tonight, whenever you're ready.
I will be reading Invictus by William Ernest Henley.
All right.
Out of the night that covers me, like is the pit from pole to pole, I think whatever gods may be for my unconquerable soul. In the fell clutch of circumstance, I have not winced nor cried aloud. Under the bludgeonings of chance, my head is bloody but unbowed. Beyond this place of wrath and tears looms but the horror of the shade, and yet the menace of the years finds and shall find me unafraid. It matters not how straight the gate, how charged with punishments the scroll. I am the master of my fate, and I am the captain of my soul. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. And what school do you go to?
I go to Kickitane High School.
And what grade are you?
I'm a 12th grader.
And what academy are you in?
I'm in the Academy of Architecture, Engineering, and Environment.
And what do you plan to do post-graduation?
I plan to attend college and major in aerospace engineering.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sophia, you didn't ask him to sing.
Would you like to sing for us, Willard?
Sing us a little something. For those of you who don't know, go ahead, just wow them for a minute.
Fly me to the moon, and let me play among the stars. Let me see what spring is like on Jupiter and Mars and other earths.
Thank you so much, Mr. Davenport. Come back to the mic. Come on back to the mic. Come on back to the mic.
Sorry.
Who do you have with you tonight?
I have my mother and my sister and the Kickitane administration team.
All right, all right. Y'all stand and be recognized. Thank you all for sharing him with us tonight. I tell you, it's always a treat and a pleasure to be in his presence. We love to hear him sing and just do some of the great things that he's doing out in the community and also with our Kickitane staff. Thank you all for the great work that you were doing over there with our students such as Mr. Davenport. So let's give them a round of applause once again. All right, so moving right along, the next item is the adoption of tonight's agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's agenda as printed. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alphonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next, I'm going to turn everything over to Ms. Goral for our recognitions for tonight.
Well, good evening, Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Dr. Banks Gray, our school board members, Superintendent Dr. Raymond Haynes, and our HCS family. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Cherry to please proceed to the microphone for tonight's recognition. All right, and we've got a special guest in our audience tonight that I'd like to invite down to the floor to stand beside me at the podium, and that would be Ricky Matthews from Wavy TV 10. If you'd join us. All right, I get to brag about you a little bit before you go up on stage with Ms. Cherry. So each year in the early fall, school divisions in Virginia have the opportunity to recognize a representative in print, radio, or television for the Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll. There's a criteria for the honorees that need to be met to be included on the media honor roll, and this criteria includes making the effort to get to know the superintendent and board chair, which you certainly have done, understanding the division's mission and goals, reporting school news in a manner that's fair, accurate, and balanced, visiting schools regularly or attending board meetings or functions, which he definitely has done that as well, and maintaining a policy of no surprises by sharing information with school representatives, which he hasn't quite met up to that bargain yet because it doesn't snow. Because he did tell Dr. Haynes he would call him first to let him know if we needed a call a snow day. So we're waiting on that no-surprise piece. But this year, Hampton City Schools nominated Ricky Matthews for the VSPA Media Honor Roll. Mr. Matthews not only meets the criteria for this recognition, but has been our school division's community partner on many levels. He served as a guest speaker this past January at our Citizen of the Month luncheon, which he did a fantastic job keeping over 180 4th through 12th graders engaged, which can be a challenge sometimes. He has visited multiple schools and classrooms to share his expertise about the weather and meteorology with our students. He even was a guest speaker on our HCS podcast, HCS Talks, last year, where he talked about his school experience, provided advice for our students, and even said he would give us a heads up about any potential snow or bad weather in the forecast. So waiting on that one. So let's please give Ricky Matthews a round of applause.
Would you please join us on stage? Before I present you with the resolution and school board coin, I think I'll listen for it as needs to go, live it up for a while. Things they may not know, okay? Ricky Matthews attended Phillips Elementary School, Sims Middle School, and then graduated from Kickitane High School, see that, in 2011, before leaving Hampton to earn his meteorology degree at the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. My daughter graduated from there. We talked about that at lunch. All right, you weren't listening. Okay. So not only is he one of our own, he has returned to the area, but he is continuing to give back to the community and to our school system. So on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Dr. Banks Gray, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, it is an honor, it really is, to present you with this certificate, resolution, and coin. This is the resolution. It says 2024 Virginia School Boards Association Media Honor Roll. Turn around so you guys can see it. All right? Present you with that. This is an official Hampton City Schools coin we want you to have. Keep that in your pocket at all times. And this is the certificate from the Virginia School Board Association. It says 2024 Media Honor Roll honoring Ricky Matthews, Wavy TV slash Fox 43. The Hampton City School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. It's signed by Dr. Cadell Patillo, who is the VSPA President, as well as Gina Patterson, who is the VSPA Executive Director. Let's have another round of applause, Mr. Ricky Matthews. Now, before you return to your seat, there are a couple of things I want to go through. First of all, do you have somebody here that's with you to celebrate this?
My wife, Allison.
Your wife, Allison. Allison, would you stand and let us see you, please? Thank you for sharing this wonderful man with us. I can tell you right now, I have two things I do at home every day. At 6:30, I tell my husband, I've got to see what Lester Holt said to me. And he acts, I act just like Lester Holt is talking to me. See, my husband say, Lester Holt called you, well, he might as well, because he told me that. Comes to weather, I want to see what Ricky Matthews is telling me. So I just wanted to tell you how much we appreciate you. You are a name in our home. So I'm going to give you the mic, an opportunity to talk, but there's one question I remember a student at Citizen of the Month asked, and I said, I don't know. They were like, Ms. Stevens Cherry, who goes in meteorology? Why? So could you just answer that for that student right now? Thank you.
Well, hang on, let me adjust this a little bit. There we go. We were wireless at mics at the station. First off, thank you to the school board and for recognizing me like this. I really do appreciate it. And, you know, as you mentioned, I went to Phillips, went to Sims, and went to Kickitane. Forgot my green tie tonight, thought of it on the drive over here. Can't wear green on TV because of the green screen, so that's why we didn't have that tonight. Why does someone become a meteorologist? Well, they're in 2nd grade at Phillips Elementary School with Ms. Kleinhans's class, and it starts to snow outside. And you get so excited, you end up convincing Ms. Kleinhans to let you call your mom and tell her what's going on, and that's your first weather recollection. Then fast forward to 5th grade, and members of the school board and some of the parents out here, probably not the kids, will remember Hurricane Isabel. That hit. And that knocked out power for two weeks. We didn't have school for like two weeks, but I remember being in 5th grade and looking on the National Hurricane Center website. Then you get into middle school, and Dr. Caggianno is your principal, and Dr. Caggianno says, hey, it'd be a great idea if we had weather in the morning announcements. So that's where my stardom, for lack of a better term, I guess, I don't know, my start in broadcasting began was out the microphone there at Sims Middle School. Then we went into TV announcements, and people still recognize me from doing weather at Sims and weather at Kickitane. And still to this day, people are like, I remember when you used to say it was going to snow, and then it snowed and we were out of school. And I remember when the kids were mad at me because we didn't get out of school when it snowed. But, you know, honestly, going back through my time in Hampton City Schools, it really was the people like Dr. Caggianno, Ms. Kleinhans, many of my other teachers who allowed me to embrace what I loved to do, which was weather, and share that with everyone else that made me to the person I am today. So I really do appreciate Hampton City Schools for recognizing me, for allowing me through the years to grow into who I became today, and still allowing me now to share that with students. It's pretty cool when we go do school visits, and we have usually about one or two kids in the class who are really into weather, and they'll come up and want to talk to you, or, you know, the teacher's trying to drag them back to class, and they're still asking me questions. We get some very interesting questions, for sure, but it is certainly fun to come to the schools and speak to the children and, you know, see the next generation of people who want to do weather, whatever they want to do. And so I really do appreciate it.
On the other hand, for Ricky Matthews, we can see why he's everybody's favorite meteorologist. Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you again for joining us this evening. And Chair Mason, that does conclude tonight's recognition. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Any comments from board members? All right, no comments. I would like to say thank you. I definitely enjoy watching you every morning, so kind of rings in my ears, I'm getting myself ready to start my day. So you help us all out with keeping us abreast of the weather and what's to come. Exactly. All right, moving along, I will take a look at the consent agenda. At 3.01 Personnel Report, number 24, I'm sorry, dash 18. 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of September 18, 2024. And 3.03 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, October 2024. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Dr. Banks Gray and seconded by Ms. Alphonja, I do believe. Was that the voice?
Yes.
I thought that was your voice, then I was looking down. All right? Any discussion?
Yet. It's okay.
Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alphonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. At this time, I'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Raymond L. Haynes. Got to get the L in there.
Thank you, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, division leadership team, and the Hampton community. Our first board report focuses on the superintendent's number-one priority, and that is to ensure the division remains focused on supporting a safe and nurturing environment for all students and staff. This evening, Dr. John Caggianno, our Deputy Superintendent and Chief of Staff, will provide an overview of some of the division's comprehensive, comprehensive school safety measures. Dr. Caggianno will be joined in this presentation by Hampton's Police Chief, Jimmy Wideman, who is also a proud graduate of Bethel High School. We certainly appreciate Chief Wideman not only taking time out of his schedule to join us this evening, but also for his ongoing partnership and collaboration with Hampton City Schools. Our partnership with the Hampton Police Division is just another example of how our school division continues to live out our mantra of one community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality. Dr. Caggianno.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the school board, Dr. Haynes. The purpose of this presentation this evening is to share with the viewing audience some of the comprehensive safety measures that our school division has in place. And I certainly would echo Dr. Haynes's sentiments in reference to our ongoing collaborative partnership, strong working relationship with the Hampton Police Division, and certainly thank Chief Wideman not only for taking the time out of his schedule to join us this evening to be a part of this presentation, but certainly for his leadership as well. So this evening, where I'd like to start, and you heard Dr. Haynes talk about one of his top priorities is that of safety, and we'll start with the school board. For the viewing audience, these are the focus areas that are embedded within the division's strategic plan. Of course, our business, our core business, you see it there, is maximizing every child's learning, but the wraparound supports, and you see right above that, safe and nurturing environment. So if you were to take a look at our strategic plan in detail, you would see goals and action steps associated with school board-driven action around creating that safe and nurturing environment. Fast forward the next slide to our superintendent's priorities. These are Dr. Haynes's priorities for this current school year, and you see front and center, priority number one, to ensure the division remains focused on supporting a safe and nurturing environment for all students and all staff. For the viewing audience at home, we actually have our list of comprehensive measures available on our website. And so at this time, I'd ask Dr. Oliver, when you take a look at this screen here, this is a screenshot of our Hampton City Schools website. If I'm on the website, I would simply click on Departments, and then I would scroll down and highlight Security. If you go back one slide, please. So Security, you see two faces on the website. You only see one here. I would like at this time to recognize our security supervisor, Mr. James Bailey, who's with us in attendance. His right hand, who is not here this evening, is our Lead Security Officer, Mr. Warren James. And the two of them, we can't thank them enough for their efforts. It really is a 24/7 job. They're very committed, very proactive, lots of initiatives, to the point now where Hampton has become a model for a number of school divisions, not only across the Commonwealth, but beyond Virginia's borders. So for example, last fall, we had a number of school divisions come into Hampton High School to take a look at our weapons detection systems, as well as our K-9 program, and had a chance to interact with our security team, as well as Hampton Police Officers, our school resource officers, and a number of safety personnel. So what I wanted to highlight on this page for parents is that link there that's in orange, Hampton City School Safety Measures. When you click on that, it launches a live document. So this is a live Google Doc, and if Dr. Oliver scrolls down, you'll see again, we've used that word comprehensive several times this evening, I have. It's a very comprehensive list. And what I wanted to do for the viewing audience this evening is just to highlight a few of these. So if we can get back into the presentation, Dr. Oliver, thank you. All right, so tried and true, see something, say something. And so we're going to go over a number of measures tonight, but this is the one that is the easiest to follow and the one that is one of our most successful ones, is see something, say something. And so we have on there, I've highlighted for parents, that Safe School Hotline. You can see there where it says temporary number. We're currently in between vendors, so at this time, if you were to call, regardless of the time of day or night, you'll get our Lead Security Supervisor, Mr. Bailey. That is, that number there, 757-727-2255, goes directly to Mr. Bailey's cell phone. That number, also, you're able to leave a recording, and when the new system is up, again, another option is whether you want to leave your information or not. We have a lot of folks who call sometimes with tips, they'll see something on social media perhaps, or in the neighborhood, hear something, and they will call and leave an anonymous message. So that is one of our top safety measures. I also wanted to share with you, you heard Dr. Haynes had mentioned, you know, our mantra. This is our mantra, one community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality. And this is another example of a number of opportunities we have to partner with local community agencies, elected officials, and tonight you're hearing again that one community, one transformation partnering with the Hampton Police Division. That first item I had on that screen, which we'll go back to in just a minute, was that of school resource officers and school security officers. So we have eight uniformed Hampton Police Division officers who are in our schools. They are assigned to middle schools and high schools in our division, and they are there on a daily basis. And then they also are assigned to various elementary schools, and they visit those schools periodically as well. For the school security officers, we have 52 of those officers, three in each middle school, and then eight in each high school. I know Chief Wideman's going to go into a little bit more detail in reference to our relationship with the school resource officers. So those school resource officers and school security officers. For parents, these are some of the items we wanted to highlight, some of the measures that aren't as well-known, and some that we've recently adopted. So the first piece there, the second bullet, Door Access Control System. So when you visit our buildings, we have one entrance for visitors, and that entrance remains locked throughout the day. That entrance also has a camera on it, so when you approach our schools and look to enter, visit, you click the button near the camera. There's a receptionist on the receiving end, she's able to make video contact with you, and you state your purpose for your visit, and they make a decision whether they open the door or not to let you in. When you come in the door, the next thing that happens is that you would walk through our weapons detection systems. And so we have weapons detection systems. We were one of the first in the state of Virginia to implement these K-12 in all of our elementary, middle schools, and high schools. And again, for the viewing audience, you might think of an antiquated metal detector. These are portable weapons detection systems, side by side, two, really, almost like three-and-a-half-foot, four-foot poles. And so they're portable, we can move them throughout the building, and any guests walk through those. During the morning, when students approach and enter school, we have security officers and/or staff manning those weapons detection systems. And when we walk through those, if they go off, if there is an alert, then they're moved to the side, and sometimes we have metal detectors, handheld devices, where we'll warn students to ensure something perhaps left in the pocket, and again, checking. And we have dialed those, I've mentioned before in a presentation, the sensitivity of those units in very high. So what happens is ours are more likely to go off, just because we want to make sure that nothing is passing through those weapons detection systems that should not. So again, we've got those dialed in. After you pass through that system, the next thing, when you check in with the office, you'll have to show your identification. That identification is entered into a system. Our visitor management technologies, we have the Raptor system that is also connected to a number of databases, crime databases, for example. So the sex offender registry, that database is also linked. And so if there's an alert or hit based on staff, someone who is visiting school grounds, then again, security teams, school administrators are notified. The internal and external camera systems, Mr. Bailey and his team have done an excellent job over the last several years, really upgrading our cameras, internal and external, so inside, outside the building, over 1,000 new cameras installed. And so again, gone are the days where we're replacing VHS tapes every 48 hours. These are digital archive files that we can access long after the week has passed. And so kudos to their team. We're continuing to implement those throughout the year. K-9 program, again, another great example of collaboration with the Hampton Police Division. Two K-9 programs, actually. We work with one group of K-9s that specialize in weapons detection, and we have another group we work with that specialize in narcotics. And so students never know why dogs are there, but dogs, Mr. Bailey works with administrators, and we have just random assignments where dogs, doesn't matter, elementary, middle school, or high school, they're out and about visiting. One of the great things with our partnerships with both the company we contract with, as well as the Hampton Police Department, if a building principal, particularly high school principal, sees something perhaps on social media the night before and says, you know what, extra precaution, let me call Mr. Bailey, or contact Corporal Hippel, school resource officers, to see if we can get the dogs in today, even though they were just here yesterday. So again, that flexibility has been wonderful for us. The next thing I'd like to highlight, the safety film for select windows. This was, we just finished installation last year on phase one of this project. So any external entry doors on our schools, if there's a glass pane, we have covered that pane, still transparent and that you can see through, but covered it with a ballistic film. And what that does is it significantly delays the amount of time it would take an intruder to try and break the glass and open the door, which we've seen in some cases throughout the country over the years in the event of an unfortunate school shooting. And so in this case, with our doors, you're not able to, in any short amount of time, break a window and reach through and open a door. So you could sit there for probably several minutes with an axe and still not be able to stick your hand through. And so this year, we embarked on phase two for this project, and so Mr. Bailey, working with his team and contractors, were also storing now, installing throughout the interior doors. So any of our schools that have glass on the teacher's door, for example, all of those are being covered with ballistic film as well, just as another comprehensive measure. Panic Button System, this was a technology that evolved, and you're starting to see now implemented in schools as a result of the incident that happened in Uvalde, Texas, where it took 77 minutes for authorities to get that situation under control. And so we have throughout, excuse me, throughout our schools in strategic locations, we have panic buttons. And those panic buttons, once depressed, immediately our law enforcement, 911 call centers notified, immediately all eight of our school resource officers are notified, immediately school administrators are notified via text in reference to the button pressed. And so it's to the point where when a button is pressed, GPS and whatnot, police know exactly where, which room in the school, where it was pressed, and time response, again, the idea being to significantly cut down on the time response for authorities to arrive on scene. This year, another new technology we installed over the summer, Door Prop Notification System. So on all of our exterior doors, elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, some of our high schools, you know, built several decades ago, have up to 90 exterior doors. And so it can be easy, in years past where a door's been propped open for whatever reason, and that door could remain propped open for a significant amount of time. Now, all of our school security officers, all of our school administrators in a school, when a door is left open longer than X number of seconds, they receive an automated text, and it indicates which door is open, and again, cutting down on the response time, students, I'm sorry, staff radioing to one another, who's in closest proximity to go ahead and close that door. And then lastly, I'll close with this, and before Chief Wideman comes up, and that is the School Threat Assessment Teams. This is a very proactive measure. So sometimes parents will call and seek assistance for their child. Sometimes teachers will say, you know, I'm seeing some things that I would like to bring a team together, see if we can put some supports in place for the student. So this is another measure a lot of parents don't know, and we wanted to highlight this evening, just in case someone is watching who knows that this is another avenue to contact your teacher, contact your building administrator, and we would be happy to collaborate with parents along those lines. At this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Chief Wideman, who's going to take a deeper dive into some of the initiatives and protocols in the Hampton Police Division.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, chief. Thank you all for having us. My pleasure, as always. It's going to be a lot of redundancy you're going to pick up from my portion of the presentation, and that's only by virtue of how well intertwined we are, the Police Division, as well as the Hampton City Schools processes, as it relates to the safety in those areas. So moving forward, like I said, I won't drag through slides for you guys, I will hit the high points, and then certainly at the end, if there are any questions specific to the Hampton Police Division, I'm capable to respond to that. And so anytime anyone's seen me in public and had a conversation about what are the successes of the Hampton Police Division, first, on the list of things that we do and do well, one of the things that probably has the most significant impact on the quality of life in our city, as well as the safety of our citizens, is our schools and our school resource officer program. We have full complement of officers that go through a rigorous selection process. that go through a rigorous selection process to actually be afforded the opportunity to participate in the school resource officer program. And then after that selection is made, both by virtue of an actual boarding process, a recommendation by their supervisors, then they're sent to enhanced training that gives them the skill sets and the tools that they need to operate within that school setting most efficiently and to the benefit of the students, staff, and faculty that are there. The misunderstanding about what a school's resource officer's role is, that they're there for security, they're there to address any violations of law that might occur. And that's totally, absolutely not the premise of the school resource officer program. Our school resource officers go in there because, one, a lot of them have some interest in being educators, having an opportunity to mentor the young people, to give guidance, direction, to intervene when the opportunity presents itself, to provide resources that would otherwise distract from their ability to not only have a safe learning experience, but to have a safe environment that is without distractions from things that happen at home and in neighborhoods. And when the occasion arises, when you identify those distractors, and we provide the resources, put them in touch with the many resources that the city has to, again, help mitigate those issues. So again, they can have a truly safe and enjoyable learning environment and experience while they're in the Hampton City School system. We get a lot of information and intelligence, not only from our school resource officers, our students, and our parents, but we have a very robust intelligence network and system. And we use that to capture any activities that might occur, not only outside of school, but in our adjacent cities, so we can identify any trends. Of course, you all know with social media, things travel fast. Things quickly become rumors that need to be dismissed. We experienced that in the last few weeks. And so with the information that we're able to collect through our crime intelligence and through our real-time crime information center, we can disseminate that information to the school resource officers, to the schools and faculty, so they know what the trends are. They can dispel any rumors. We can put them at ease at some of the things that they may hear that would otherwise pose a threat to the students or the properties more times than not. And most recently, rumors or by way of some sort of social media trend to get people alarmed. So we rapidly dispel those rumors and that misinformation. And we utilize our public information officers as well as the school public information network to get that information out to our parents and our students to help not only bring them peace of mind, but make sure that they're comfortable and, again, rapidly address anything that poses a threat to our school systems. As previously mentioned, we have a K-9 Corps. We have a specific K-9 dedicated to the schools. But by virtue of the relationship that we have with the Hampton City Schools, of course, all the resources that are available to the Hampton Police Division are available to our schools. Our K-9 Corps, not only is it useful for, say, detection of, say, narcotics or drugs, also it allows us to make those places safe when we host events such as graduations, events after school, some of the sporting events. When there's a need to have a presence to clear those areas prior to the arrival of our students, parents, and faculty, we can make that happen. We can rapidly look for missing children. We can deploy to find other things that might pose a threat to the facility and/or the people there. As mentioned before, Mr. Bailey, he has a K-9 Corps that he reaches out to that is a robust group that comes out, provides not only a screening prior to arrival. They maintain a presence in those spaces. And we've taken great advantage of that because it's a force multiplier because of the volume and number of assets he has available to them. And we share that partnership to make sure, again, that those venues are safe for your presence. We monitor our social media. We have our own social medias where we can disseminate information, but we constantly monitor social media. We can identify the potential for something that might happen in and around the schools, also in the neighborhoods, because a lot of times that spills from the neighborhoods into the school environment. But being proactive, when we identify those, we can dispatch officers to those areas, speak with those involved parties to get a better, I guess, understanding of what the potential exists. We do that in a 24/7 operation. So if we identify something that poses a risk, more times than not, we've resolved it before the school day begins. So we, again, use our real-time crime information network, our investigators, to collect information. We constantly collect that data. And then we start our process of investigating to make sure that we can be proactive and mitigate any risks to you all. As an accompaniment to the crime line that you all have, we have our own crime line. And again, we get many tips from our students, parents. Sometimes people within the communities may have information. They forward that information anonymously to our crime line. And again, we act on that responsively 24 hours a day. So when we get the information, we act upon it. We try to resolve any issues that might exist. We communicate with the schools and let them know what the threats may be. And again, because we're so proactive and our response is rapid, we mitigate most issues before they even make it to your table. So it's effective for us. And it's, again, because we're proactive and constantly using our resources to make sure that the school environment remains safe. Violent social networks or gangs, we have a gang intelligence unit that meets at least once a week. We take the information that we collect from the communities, from the schools, neighborhoods, and social media to make sure there are no violent offenses that happens within our schools. And again, we take that information. We share it with our local partners, our closest partner being Newport News. They're part of our intelligence collection as well as our conversations. And so if they identify something that appears to be threatening in their community, we collect that data, see what the relationships are to the members of our community, our students, and then respond proactively in that. And that, again, has been proven to be successful to help us maintain the safety of the students and the faculty in our schools. So what can the parents do, of course? We encourage them to have communication. That's probably the best thing we can do because we get a great deal of information by way of the relationship the students have with their parents, and then they convey that to the police department. Communicate often with the members of the faculty and staff at the schools. The parents can do that, again, because they may have information that we are absent of. And we encourage the dialogue where we can, again, determine what the needs and wants are of the community and then respond appropriately without making, I guess, presumption about what most effectively works to provide delivery of service. We'd rather know how you want that service delivered, and then we'll meet that and accommodate you. And again, the importance of education, know where your children are, have accountability, and again, just be available for the communication that we're here for. Again, we try to take advantage of every opportunity to establish dialogue. I can say personally, there's never a week at some point in time, I haven't had a discussion with some member from Hampton City Schools, just recently, Ms. Erica Spencer. We had a dialogue about opportunities to engage the young people more. I spoke to, excuse me, to Vice Principal at Hampton High School about an opportunity to engage the young people. And again, these engagements are just community events. Allow them to interact with the Police Division and the members of the Police Department in a non-adversarial emergency scenario. So we can build those relationships and communications. Because, again, it's an expansion of our school resource program, but also, most importantly, we're service providers to the students and making sure they're having a great experience, not only in the classroom, but as they participate in sports and other activities in the community. So. Operation Ceasefire, the attorney, excuse me, by the Commonwealth Attorney. And what essentially that does is allows us to speak to the young people through programs that he sponsors. And again, it primarily addresses gun violence. They call it Operation Ceasefire. Again, affords us an opportunity to have the dialogue with the people for prevention, intervention, and enforcement. Tell them the consequences of those decisions that they may make. And now we're open it for questions, if there are any. Not that I want to stay up here longer, it's just... Thank you all so much.
Thanks, sir.
Any questions from board members, comments? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don't have questions per se, but I just wanted to take a moment to commend this team for the informative information that you shared in this safety presentation. I know there's been a lot of false narratives that's been spread. And I just want to say that I truly appreciate you highlighting the comprehensive safety measures that you guys have put in place. It's reassuring just to see the dedication to our students and our staff. And I just want to thank you for your commitment to keeping our schools and our students and our staff safe. Thank you all for the proactive measures in keeping Hampton City Schools safe. So to Chief Wideman, Mr. Bailey, Dr. Caggianno, Dr. Haynes, as noted, it was noted by a philosopher once, and he once said that you all are the bomb. So I just wanted to say that. Yes, I'm the philosopher. So no, seriously, on a serious note, I really do appreciate the safety measures that Hampton City Schools put in place on a daily basis. So thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Other board members' comments?
I would like to say, one of the key things that was mentioned was the whole, "See something, say something." I would like to say to our viewing audience and listening public, if you see something, don't just say something, say something to us. We're the ones that can investigate, resolve the issues, and disseminate the correct information. Oftentimes, we find that our community members will put information on the internet that's not vetted, which can sometimes create a false state of panic for our community. That does us no good in this community nor within our schools as we're trying to vet proper information and put out correct information. If there is a safety threat, we need to make sure that we're putting the correct information out there because we have safety measures in place. Once you find out that the information that you have shared, please be a responsible citizen and put the correct information up. You can edit your post, you can delete your post. You can disseminate the correct information if it's something that you feel you just need to say. But by all means, put out the correct information because we take safety of our schools, for our students, and our staff very seriously. And we don't need to have any false narratives floating around in the community about what's going on in Hampton City Schools. We want our parents to feel safe, knowing that their kids are okay. No parent should be at work wondering what's going on in Hampton City Schools with their child. No child should be at school wondering whether or not they're actually safe within their school. So help us continue to work within this community and work within our schools around, centering around school safety. And I do want to ask Dr. Haynes a question and allow him to ask the, you know, answer this question. And it's basically, have there been any instances where we have had any positive hits with our weapons detection system? And I'm asking this question on air for transparency because I want the community to know we're not hiding any information because school safety is important to us. Dr. Haynes?
Chair Mason, the answer to your question is the weapons detection units and the K-9s work. And we've been able to identify and intervene in situations before they have become a serious problem. So yes, we have discovered some things that folks brought to school that they should not have brought. And we were able to intervene and provide the appropriate actions as a result, and continue to do so.
And Chair Mason, I'd like to give a shout out to Dr. Haynes for his leadership as well. You know, sometimes you see things on a visual and superintendent's priorities, and it looks like a nice visual. You know, he lives this out. So for tomorrow morning, for example, he meets on a monthly basis with all of our principals and assistant principals, and he reinforces his priorities. And so tomorrow, I wanted to just share this quote that he has in his presentation. "Following procedures is the key to safety. It ensures that what should happen does and what could go wrong doesn't." So again, it's not just that we have measures in place, but individuals are held accountable for implementing measures, and there's monitoring. And so it really is a systems approach that we're very proud of.
Thank you. And we need help from the community, you know? We cannot stop what kids bring from their homes, or we can stop them from coming into the schools. And so we need parents to work with us. Check backpacks, check pockets, check purses, check everything. Own that responsibility to help us, once again, keep our schools safe. All right? Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Thank you, Warren James. Thank you, Chief Wideman and the Hampton Police Department. I can't thank you all enough for the work that you do day in and day out surrounding school safety. So thank you. Dr. Haynes?
Chair Mason, I would be remiss if I didn't add. Sheriff Bowden could not be with us tonight, but she wanted to share her sentiments as well. well. As Sheriff of Hampton, she wanted to say she's extremely proud of Hampton City Schools' comprehensive school safety measures. This board and administration's commitment to safety is to be applauded, and she knows that that commitment will continue to keep our students and staff safe. And she continues to be a strong partnership with us as well, and lives out our mantra of one community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality.
All right. Thank you.
For our next board report, Dr. James Harris, our chief academic officer, and Dr. Kate Maxlow, our coordinator of curriculum and assessment, will provide an update on the upcoming Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival, which, I'm sorry, where students from Hampton City Schools will debut their films after working alongside Hollywood's film industry experts. Dr. Harris?
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of the Hampton School Board, Dr. Haynes, and the Hampton community. I am excited this evening to introduce this year's Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival, AKA Hollywood to Hampton, founded by screen actors Jacob Young and Trent Garrett. Hampton City Schools high school students have collaborated with Hampton actors, producers, directors, and other industry professionals to write, act, and produce high-quality short films. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Kate Maxlow, who will provide an update and overview of the program and the films that will be debuted this year.
Thank you so much, and I'm very excited because we actually have two student actors with us today in some of our films. So Sophia Harris, one of the main leads in Chain Shot, and Mr. Will Davenport, one of the leads in Until Daylight Comes. So, thank you guys. I know that's not why you're here, but thank you for being here anyway. All right, so yes, I am so excited to talk to you about Hollywood to Hampton. Dr. Harris already gave a little bit of an introduction, but what we're really looking to do is teach students the basic elements of writing, producing, filming, and editing short films through the, that should be 20, that'll be, that was for last year, the 23-24 school year, and then also for this upcoming school year as well, resulting in four 10-to-15-minute short films that we ended up producing during the summer of 2024. And that, last year's work will culminate on October 18th through the 20th in our Next Generation Storytellers Film Festival, with the award ceremony being on October 19th. Everyone has their red carpet looks picked out. Yes, maybe? Okay. All right. So our goals really are to increase authentic and relevant learning experiences by combining education and entertainment, and also bringing new attention and potential revenue to Hampton by elevating the area and the talent that resides here. And, my favorite, increase writing scores throughout the division through the use of a fun, scaffolded, screenwriting curriculum that all of our ninth-grade students completed last year. Participation, we had over 100 students who participated specifically in the Hollywood to Hampton program, and like I said, all ninth-grade students also completed Screenwriting 101 as part of their freshman academy. And we had over 100 students who either did screenwriting, acting, the Movies 101 class, or were on set with us doing various jobs. We had over 60 screenplays submitted last year from students looking to win that $500 prize and have their screenplay professionally produced. And then we had over 60 students audition for the parts in the films as well. We also had a ton of support in the schools. Our division champions, I don't know why she didn't put herself on there, but Jennifer Lockett, as well as Doris Argane and Melanie Parker. And then you can see our school mentors, Ralph Scott, Tracy Bourne, Michael Price, and they were there almost every day during filming as well, just playing a very, very integral role. And then we were lucky enough as well, we had Ms. Lisa Sconeers, who came and did makeup. And then one of our security guards, Rodney Woodruff, was able to come and play a part, but also just work, he has a little bit of a background in film, so was able to work with the students as well. Our funding came from local funds. We also used an arts and literacy for secondary education grant and some innovation grant. I was really excited because we were able to pay students to not only direct the films, but to act in the films, in addition to the four screenwriters whose films were produced, winning that money as well. And our funding goal is really to continue to grow the number of sponsors and generate publicity and revenue for local organizations so that we can have even more funds that come from sponsorships and may include supplies, filming locations, services, et cetera. So when you come out sometime between October 18th and October 20th, October 18th is the opening night, and that is also red carpet, and then October 19th is the awards. We will have four Hampton films that you can see. The first one is Chain Shot, starring Ms. Sophia Harris over there, in which you get to hear her lovely English accent as she plays a pirate who unfortunately, her first mate decides to mutiny against her. I didn't give anything away, just the first couple minutes. Our next one, The Zombie King Wants to Turn Everyone Into His Mindless Minions But All Timothy Wants to Do is Make Breakfast. That is a comedy, a zombie comedy. It's an up-and-coming genre.
Zombie comedy.
Yeah. Until Daylight Comes is our very intense drama this year. Please bring your Kleenex. Ms. Tracy Bourne is also in that, and just watching her and Mr. Parks interact, I'm going to admit, I got a little misty-eyed. But anyway, that one is also starring Mr. Willard Davenport as one of the two brothers, and so they learn unexpected lessons about life and themselves on a camping trip. And then our thriller this year is called The Choice Is Yours, when a teenage girl finds a strange box on her doorstep that promises to make all of her dreams come true if she dares to trust it.
Whoa.
So here are just some pictures. I didn't know you were going to be here, Sophia, of our filming. We spent a very long day out on the Fort Monroe Beach. It was a wonderful experience getting to work with the community. We even had Yorktown Pirate Adventures came, and they actually brought out their boat. There's a whole great story, find me at the Film Festival about that. And you can see doing makeup here and all of the costumes. That was wonderful. The Choice Is Yours, that was our thriller. That was mostly filmed in Bethel High School. We had two different directors for that. And then we were also filming in somebody's house, I think Jennifer Lockett's in-law's house. Yes, that's right. We had a lot of people donate their houses. If you ever want to donate your house and have it become a movie set, please let me know because we always need them. Omelet Sunday, our zombie comedy, this one was super fun. Everybody got to wear a lot of zombie makeup. The Zombie King, I thought, looked absolutely amazing. Don't worry, Timothy over there in the green pants is just fine. And then Until Daylight Comes, we did this one at the home of Ms. Jennifer Butler, and there you can, there you, I didn't know you were going to be here. There he is, Mr. Will Davenport, along with Diane Parks, his co-star. So as I said, if you're interested in joining us, we would love to have you for any or all of these evenings. There's also going to be a Sunday matinee. There is a link, although I believe Jennifer Lockett probably has contacted you all through Ms. Carolyn Bowers to set up times if you need tickets or whatever, just let me know. And then we are going to have films from not just Hampton this year, but also Newport News and Charleston, and CNU has also signed on for screenwriting this year. So next year, we'll even have some college-level films. CNU is also donating a scholarship to one lucky young actor or actress who is interested. So a lot of community partnerships coming up. These are the Film Festival Awards that we are going to have this year. Some of you may have already been tapped to deliver those awards, or if you're interested, let me know. And then we will be taking students to the Virginia Film Festival again. They are going to take all 11 films, and so students will actually be able to take a day trip to travel to Charlottesville to see their movies on a professional movie theater with other folks there to, you know, see their amazing work. And we'll take probably 15 to 25 current Hampton City School students. So the next round is going to be, whoop, not late September, I meant October, where we are going to start our Screenwriting 101 again after school. 16 selected students will attend the workshop and the screenplays. It's important to note that last year's Screenwriting 101, three out of four of the screenplays came from our Screenwriting 101 course, showing that it really does help students understand how to format and write good screenplays. And then we'll also have our Movies 101 After School Course, where students learn how to produce the films from the screenplays. There is the flyer for our Film Festival, and if there are any questions, I would love to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from board members?
I have a question.
All right. Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you so much for that presentation. I was glad to hear you mention that CNU is offering a scholarship. You remember the last time I asked you about the scholarships? How are we coming along with that scholarships as far as other colleges offering scholarships to our students?
Yeah, so we are definitely working on that. We want to, working with Jacob and Trent, really, they're trying to grow responsibly, and so they don't want to extend too far out to the point where, you know, it gets too big too fast. But we will absolutely, if you want to introduce them to anybody who might, other colleges or universities who might be interested in giving away scholarships or doing screenwriting, I would love to help facilitate that because that would be amazing. That really is their goal, is to make this a big program.
I might have a connection with Regent University, so you're not going to talk.
Yes, sir, I would love that.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse. Any other comments? Yes, Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So awesome presentation.
Thank you.
Last year, just to see our students work alongside the Hollywood actors, the producers, the directors, and to produce these high-quality short films was absolutely amazing, and I so look forward to seeing all of the short films for this year, and bravo and job well done. Y'all are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you.
That is wonderful.
The students are truly amazing, like just to see what they have written, and then the quality acting, it just, it, some of them are, you're just going to blow your minds. Awesome. Thank you.
All right, we're certainly looking forward to it. Yeah, Dr. Woodhouse?
I'm looking forward to seeing this young lady here and her accent, but the young man, Davenport, I know his family. He probably doesn't know, but his mother knows that I know the family, so I'm looking forward to seeing him act and probably hearing him sing again. I remember him when he was a little baby.
Well, I didn't know how well he could sing because we would have written that into the script if we could go back in time and...
Yeah, he used to try to sing when he was a little teeny fellow.
Yeah. If he auditions again this year, he's going to get a singing part. I'm going to write one just for him.
Well, based on tonight, he's more than a singer, he's a crooner. I picked that up, yes, exactly.
That's what we need at the Film Festival. We actually need like dance numbers with singing, so we'll see what we can put together in the next two weeks.
Good.
All right, thank you very much.
All righty, thank you.
All right, Dr. Haynes?
For our final report this evening, Mrs. Brittany Branch, our chief financial officer, will share the business operations and financial reports for July 2024 and August 2024.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, Dr. Haynes, and Hampton community. Tonight, I am presenting two reports of July and August of 2024. If anyone took the time to read through the reports, they will notice that they look a little different. They have gone through a makeover, but it's all in the spirit of just enhancing the information that is reported each month. So at the end of July 2024, our revenues, including fund balance, total $31 million. This figure then increased to $46 million by the end of August. The largest revenue source was state funds for both months, and as of the end of August, we received about over 14% of our budgeted revenues. The fund balance does represent about $18.7 million of the total. This is made up of the fiscal year 2024 encumbrances that carry forward to this current fiscal year 2025, and also the carry forward of the All-in Funds Grant, which is a multi-year grant. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances total $40 million in July and $63 million by August. Please note that within the August figure, it does include the transfer of the All-in Grant to Fund 60 reimbursable projects, and that was a part of the approved budget for fiscal year 2025. Our largest spending category was in instruction, and by the end of August, we spent about 19% or utilized 19% of the budget. Our March 31st average daily membership projection is $18,814. We are in the process of submitting our fall membership report, so I will be reporting back to the school board on once that has been submitted to videoee. And then, as always, you do have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for both months, July and August of 2024. That completes tonight's presentation.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from board members? Thank you. All right. Mr. Superintendent, anything else?
That concludes reports. Superintendent?
All right, so that takes us to the next item on the agenda, deliberation. 5.01, revision of school board policy GB, general human resources policy. 5.02, review of school board policy GBA-CA, staff dress code. 5.03, 5.03, revision of school board policy GBA-CC, maintaining professional staff and student boundaries. 5.04, revision of school board policy GBEB, reports of certain acts to school authorities. 5.05, review of school board policy GBEH, lactation support. 5.06, review of school board policy GCI, staff assignments and transfers. 5.07, review of school board policy GCPA, reduction in workforce. And all of those are housed by Ms. Ruth, and she went through them last meeting. Are there any other comments or questions, clarification questions for Ms. Ruth? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Ruth.
All right. Dr. Mason, may I point out one?
Oh, yes.
One item. With policy listed as number five, GBEH, lactation support. That is a MIRROR policy with JHCL, and it's listed under the VASBA policy column, but not under the HCS policy column. But when you are approving the updates to the personnel policy, that will also include the MIRROR student policy.
Okay.
Okay. I also have the next policy, so I'll just stay right here if that's okay.
That's quite all right, all right. So anything in regards to deliberation? All right, so I'll move along to deliberation first read. 6.01, review of school board policy GCPAR, reduction in workforce guidelines. 6.02, revision of school board policy GCPF, suspension of employees. 6.03, review of school board policy GCQC, exchange teaching. 6.04, review of school board policy KL, public complaints. 6.05, revision of school board policy AF, comprehensive plan. 6.06, review of school board policy, new school policy actually, AG, literacy plan. And 6.07, new school board policy IGBD, programs for students with reading deficiencies. And Ms. Ruth, you're already at the mic for the first four.
Sir, thank you very much. For all of the human resources policies, so that's all of the policies that start with the G, those are all five-year reviews. There is only one policy, GCPF, suspension of employees, that has a couple of minor grammar changes at the bottom of page two, just to update the language. But the others are all just a five-year review with no changes. And the final policy that I have is policy KL, public complaints. That is also a five-year review with no changes.
Okay. All right. All right. And the remaining policies with Dr. Harris?
A policy AG, the literacy plan, and policy IGBD, programs for students with reading deficiencies. Their mandated policy adoption required by the Virginia Literacy Act for all school divisions to implement.
Okay. All right. Any clarifying questions from board members regarding these policies? All right. Okay. All right, thank you very much. That takes us to item number seven on the agenda, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Charbonneau, have you received any? All right, so we'll move along. Item number eight, information, 8.01, next meeting, the next work session will be held on October the 16th, right here at Jones', and our next regular meeting will be held on November the 6th, right here at Jones' as well. 8.02, other items for information. I'll start with you, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Mason. Prior to going into other informational items, I did want to make the listening audience aware, I think we have increased the number of school resource officers. I believe we actually have 13 school resource officers in our buildings as well, just for the listening audience. So today, also October 2nd, is National Custodian Day. This year is especially meaningful as it marks the first year that our dedicated custodians are back as Hampton City Schools employees. We are incredibly grateful for their hard work and commitment to keeping our schools clean, safe, and welcoming for our students, staff, and families. Next Wednesday, October 9th, is our annual My Future, My Journey Career Expo. This is one of our signature academies of Hampton events that is held at the Hampton Roads Convention Center and provides our ninth-grade students from all four high schools the opportunity to explore college and career paths as they engage with business and community partners. Also on this day, as part of our College and Career Day, our 10th graders will be taking their PSATs, and our 11th grade students will be at the convention center, participating in Making a Splash: Ways of Change Elevating Hampton Teens, a forum for safe spaces and future opportunities, which is a new event in partnership with Hampton Parks and Recreation and Leisure Services. A friendly reminder that Friday, October 11th, our elementary students, our elementary students will not report to school, as this is our second Elementary Teacher Planning Day this school year. This includes our elementary students only at Kilgore Gifted Center and Andrews Pre-K through eight, Andrews and Phoenix Pre-K through eight schools. Only the elementary students. The middle-grade students have to report during their normal times. Our middle-grade students, once again, in these three schools will report to school on these elementary planning days. This week, the Virginia Department of Education released state accountability results to include accreditation, on-time graduation rates, and dropout rates. As you may recall, Dr. Harris provided a report on accreditation at the first September school board meeting. As part of that presentation, Dr. Harris shared that 100% of our schools are accredited without conditions, the highest level of accreditation rating. What we learned from the data that was released this week of the 15 school divisions that comprise Region Two, which includes all school divisions in Hampton Roads from the South Side Peninsula and Eastern Shore, Hampton is one of four, one of four, only four school divisions to be fully accredited without conditions. More great news to share in regards to the data that was released this week, is our on-time graduation and dropout rate. Ms. Pollak will be providing, our chief of secondary school leadership will be providing a more detailed presentation next month on this topic, and I know I am stealing a bit of her thunder, but I have to acknowledge that Hampton City Schools has the highest on-time graduation rate and the lowest dropout rate of the 15 districts in this region, which I will repeat again, sorry, Ms. Pollak.
Say it.
Region, Hampton City Schools has the highest on-time graduation rate and the lowest dropout rate of the 15 districts in the region. So Region Two includes all of the school divisions in the Hampton Roads area from South Side Peninsula and Eastern Shore. And I am complete with information, Chair Mason.
All right, thank you very much. Any other information from other board members?
I don't know anything can top that.
All right, then, we're going to close on that. With no further business being brought before this board tonight, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.